Right, and John's not here. He was here at that meeting. I don't know if you'd want feedback from him.
Well, also, I have some, a comment on it.
Okay.
So why don't I just give that to you? It's not the EBI thing, because I wasn't sure about the use of that. It's just a, it's just, not a typo, it's a... That it says it will be held on November 22nd, or something like that, and it'd already been held.
Um, oh, right, by then. Right, 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 got it, got it.
Okay, it's 7:01, and so I want to call the meeting of December 17th, 2014, of the Planning Board of the Town of Newbury, to order. My name is John Weiss, I'm the Chair of the Board.
Kathleen Pearson.
Richard Moss.
George Morris.
Martha Taylor, Town Planner.
That's for mostly the television audience, but also you guys. So we have on our agenda meeting minutes, but they, we have a film, they were not able to approve them this evening because they got out a little bit late, and you haven't had a chance to look at them. I just looked at them quickly, so I assumed...
There was a couple of things I wanted to make sure were in the meeting minutes, so that's why.
Okay, so can we defer that to the next meeting?
Yep.
Okay, good. So we have two appearances this evening. The first is William DiFrancesco, is that the, okay? Of the Stowaway Storage LLC, doing business as Newbury Self-Storage at 2331 Sled Road. So do you want to make a little presentation about what you're up to, and then drop your stuff off, and, okay?
Microphone.
And introduce yourselves in. You can bring that microphone closer.
It's for the TV audience, not for the...
Yeah, understood. Is that working? Okay.
Don't, yeah, he'll pick it up, don't worry.
You can also take it off the stand if you want to walk around with it.
That's more comfortable for you, okay?
As long as you don't turn it off when you do that.
There we go. For the record, my name's Eric Bodeman with Millennium Engineering, and as you said, this is Bill DiFrancesco. He's the General Partner of Newbury Storage LLC, Stowaway Storage LLC. He actually lives in town, so that's generally a good thing. He lives in Byfield. So what we're proposing is, Bill bought the site that's surrounded by Sled Road, and Route 1, and Boston Road goes all the way around the site. It comes out basically right across from the dump. It's about 56 acres, significant portion is wetlands. What we're proposing is a self-storage facility. It's one of the few developments that I think you could do on this property because of limitations with ledge and wetlands and perking or not being able to perk. We're gonna have a small office in this building. There will be a septic system associated with that, but other than that, there's eight buildings. It's gonna be about 59,000 square feet of storage space. We hope to do it in two phases, but we're still, Bill, we're still trying to figure out whether we're gonna do one or two phases, but we'll get through that.
Are they one-story buildings?
One-story buildings, and what I brought tonight was just a rendering of what the front building is gonna look like. It certainly is not your typical-looking storage facility. You can see the whole front of the building, this is facing Route 1, is all glass. It looks goo-, I think it really looks good. He's, Bill has tried, gone out of his way to actually try to make this look not like a storage facility for the front building, so you have a really good appearance as you drive along Route 1 or enter the site.
And again, I'm sorry, you said, what's the square footage there, 59?
There's 59,000 square foot in the eight buildings. That structure is, I have it here somewhere.
Hi. They just started.
Just started. Eighty-three hundred?
Eighty-three hundred square feet.
And it's all on one story?
All on one story, yep, yep, yep. And obviously, its access is off of Route 1, which is state highway, so we understand that we eventually have to go get a Mass Highway Access Permit.
Right.
The driveway entrance as we show it is, I met, when we started doing this back in, like, July, I met with Mass DOT, their District Traffic Engineer, to talk about where they wanted to see the access, and this is where they wanted access. It's the high point of the road. The road drops down as you go to Sled Road, and it drops down going the other direction.
Is that sled right there?
This is Sled Road, right here. Yeah. So actually, the site distance coming out of Sled Road is not good. They did not want us to use Sled Road as the access. They preferred access off of Route 1. So if you drive by out there, there's a, there is a flat spot, a high spot, which is where the access is gonna be.
And what's directly across from you at that point?
There is nothing directly across. There's a house, one house over here.
That's right.
There's a white house over here. Bill has spoken to that owner, and that owner at least informally has said he has no issues with the project, and apparently, he's willing to write a letter to that effect.
He already has, actually. I got it, I got it today.
Beautiful.
I was gonna say.
Well done.
And the history of this site, I don't know if any of you have ever been out on the site, but when we went out to the site to survey it, it was pretty eye-opening. The, I guess, the family that lived here, the older gentleman used to go to the dump and bring stuff back from the dump. There's...
He was a collector.
There's, he was, he was. There's a lot of garbage out there, a lot of junk out there that is, is being cleaned up.
That's a kind word for it.
So only access off of Route 1? I'm sorry, not Sled Road? So you're gonna have any kind of emergency access or anything?
There's a current access off of Sled Road here, but it's, it's really low and it's really wet. We're gonna propose just to put a couple culverts here to get the water from one side of the road to the other, and keep this as kind of an access for Bill, an informal access, not for the public at all.
So you will have an access off of that, that's what we're gonna know?
Yes, yes, yeah. And that's mainly because there's a bunch of the site in the back, that he'll be able to come in here and get to the back if he wants to come out with his tractor and do some work or something.
Is that structure gone, or is it still there?
The house is still there.
But you now own the property, right?
I do. I've ordered out, and we're in the process of, we have dumpsters there. We're in the process of taking all of the trash and calling in the dumpsters.
Bill, have you run this business in other places, or is this a new venture?
Excuse me, can you take the microphone?
Oh, right.
Sorry.
It's a new venture for me. I own some industrial real estate. I've spent the past 25 years developing affordable housing. I've done, I've worked for McDonald's Corporation, I've worked for REITs and pension funds and private equity funds, and I wanted to get into something on my own eventually, and I've hired a consultant, his name is Jim Donardo, and he's on the board of the Self-Storage Association of America.
Okay.
So this is your first facility like this, then?
It is. And I've done a market study, and it is my first, and I've done a market study, which demonstrated a need for the facility.
I need one more clarification before you go on. I'm familiar with the two parcels, but I'm having a hard time seeing the boundaries. Is this just the front portion of it, and not the back?
Yeah, the full site plans show the boundary, but it's a 56-acre lot, so what happens is it's bordered by Sled Road, and this is, this stone wall is the edge of Sled Road. It comes out to Route 1 right here, and it goes down to the intersection of Boston Road, and it's bounded by Boston Road all the way back around to over here.
The 56 acres.
The 56 acres is.
And so this is, how many acres?
There's about, I believe, 15 acres of uplands here. This development is four acres.
Okay.
So four out of the total, okay.
And that's already been perked?
It's been perked. We actually have a small septic system designed over here, and the reserve area is out back. Those are the only two areas we could find that perked, and basically, what he's gonna have is, Bill's gonna have some office space in here, so we need to meet Title V requirements for that, but we wouldn't be able to put a big system on here. If this, if this was a regular strip mall, you wouldn't be able to build it because you don't, you wouldn't have enough room for a septic system.
What is the topo like there? You showed us the building, which is, which is a good-looking building. Does it go down? Is it flat? In other words, as I go into the site, am I looking at a series of buildings? Or are they down, or are they up?
No, you're gonna be, they're pretty, the road out here is elevation 110, okay? This first floor is elevation 113, so it's a three-foot rise from here, and then it drops down. The next three buildings drop down a couple of feet, and then this is all pretty flat in here. It's all basically a couple of feet above the roadway. This is a big, this area, it's, there's wetlands all around it, and it drops off pretty quick into the wetlands, so it's like a big knob, and what we're doing is, rather than fighting the ledge, there's a lot of ledge out there, is basically, we're bringing in fill to grade the site, rather than trying to excavate and fight the ledge.
Is it on both parcels, or just the front one?
Oh, yeah, yeah. There is a, there is gonna be, you know, gated access here, so...
I was just curious about your security, how are you gonna handle security?
Yeah, there's, there's gonna be, there's gonna be a gate here with a keypad, which is the access, so this whole back of the site will be protected.
And so the gate will go around the entire property? You're gonna do that?
There's a fence, there's a fence around the property, and the gate here will help shield, you know, the buildings from the roadway. And this side, this whole side is wetlands, and then as you get over here, there's an upland that comes down here to Route 1, then from here, all the way down to Boston Road is all wetlands, and all the way around the back, so, you know, significant portion of it is.
Could you show us where the boundary of the two parcels are? Is this all on the smaller parcel that's at Route 1?
No.
And Sled Road, or is that go over?
This is on both parcels. The house parcel, the house sits right here, so the house parcel was about three and a half acres that comes over here, and then the rest of it is a different parcel.
So the house will be demoed? I'm trying to figure out if you're gonna have multiple structures other than this one on, so it's, this...
The house will be demoed. There'll be no residential on the site.
And are these permanent structures, or are they like trailers?
They're permanent structures, on a foundation, either a...
Slab-on-grade?
Either slab-on-grade or frost walls, or, yep.
Do you have onsite security?
There'll be security cameras. It will not be onsite security. Most of the time, there will be nobody here. There's basically gonna be one employee, which is Bill, or, you know, one of his sons, or somebody maybe working here, but the intent is to basically make it self-sufficient, you know, I can't think of the right word, but...
Gate access would only be from 6:00 AM until 8:00 PM.
Those are your hours of operation, basically?
Yeah, the gate operation, that's when, that's when your customers can come in, eight, or 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. I may be there from 8:00 until 6:00 at night.
Do we have something else in town that's box storage like this?
The storage over in the old Expo.
Oh, Byfield, Byfield, right, right, that's the only...
Which brings up a nice question. Go ahead. That facility, we had issues of, remember, they were putting storage containers? Are you gonna be planning on putting other storage containers? I don't know what you call them, like the ones, what do you call those things?
Do you know the facility we're talking about?
The mobile ones.
Right.
There's a facility that's...
Like the pods, you see the...
They're like pods, and they're all over the back of the property.
Yeah, I've seen that. No, I don't have any plans on...
We're gonna have probably, I'll probably propose to the board to have some type of restriction if there's something, because we have had issues over there, just to let you know. Unless you, if you're planning on, just let us know, and we'll try to figure it out.
We might have to have something that, if alterations to the plan, or that they have to come back in and get approval or something.
Yeah, Bill, Bill has no intention of...
Because these guys just indiscriminately put them out there.
Yeah, I live in town, and it's my intent, and I'm gonna be working here, and it's my intent to make this look as nice as possible.
So that's why it looks so nice.
But it's not so much, because even though you, if you could sell it, and that's what we're kinda thinking of, you own it now, but you could not, might not own it later.
That's correct, but my intent would not be to sell it.
Another question that's come up is, and you, we talked about it briefly at our pre-application meeting, is how, how will you control what gets stored there? How will you ensure that there's not gonna be any hazardous storage?
Well, the rental agreement specifically does not permit hazardous storage. When I have my consultant for the public hearings, he can go into greater detail on how this works. If there's a automobile store there, it has to be registered, which means it's insured. If it's from the Hampshire, I need proof of insurance. Otherwise, no hazardous materials are allowed at all in the facility.
If you don't have somebody on-site some of the time, you know, how will you be able to control that, even though it's in your agreement?
I don't know that you can. I don't know that you can. I mean, if someone wants to sneak something in, they can. I love security cameras all over the place.
I'm just asking, the questions come up, so. And the chief, the fire chief, I don't know, I know that you've had a conversation with him, but that may certainly be one of his conditions.
Yeah, we gave him some plans, and he's reviewed, he's made a few comments. We actually tried to get a hold of him today to get, see if he had any more comments, but apparently, he doesn't have anything too significant. But, you know, I wait till we see what, what actually he puts in writing.
So is this a site plan, and do you show parking in the front of your building that you're gonna, your office building, or how are you gonna handle it?
Yeah, this is just a kind of a color thing, to kind of give you an idea of it. Yeah, we do have parking in the front here, and parking along here.
And you have a site plan that shows all that?
Yes, yes.
And you also have proposed landscaping in the front?
Yes, we do.
You're aware that we are very interested in doing that?
Yes, yeah, that's, yeah, we have landscaping. We have landscaping in this area, in this area. It is, for the most part, because I know it'll come up, it is mostly low-growing, because you need to have site distance to get onto Route 1. You can't plant a lot of shrubs that grow really high, because it'll block your site distance coming out.
Yeah, we don't, we don't, we don't want a fence, but we, you might wanna have one or two, you know what I mean?
Yes.
A landscaper would figure it out for you. Yeah, a lot of low things, but occasionally, you can have something that goes up high.
Yes, and we have a, we have a plan in our set that is done by a landscape architect, so.
Good, we'll look at that.
Way above my ability to design.
Martha, you have anything?
Well, just to let the board know, we did have a pre-application meeting. It wasn't, not everybody could come, but it was Doug, and Sam, and I, and Chief Riley was there, and the chief looked at it, and he said he had absolutely no, you know, no issues with what he was seeing, so.
Good to hear.
And as they said, they're in discussions with Chief Pearson, and it will go out to everybody for review.
Okay. Other board members, any thoughts or things? Would you just accept it and go from there? Elizabeth?
Yep, so the board needs to vote to accept the application, and then set a public hearing date.
Can I have a motion for that, please?
You have members. I'll make a motion.
I'm looking at you.
I noticed. Someone's gonna second it.
Second.
All those in favor? No, we'd have to frame the, what is it? Do you know what it says?
Move to, move to accept the application of Stowaway.
That's what you need to say. Then that's seconded. All those in favor? And then...
Then the public hearing date.
Public hearing date?
Right.
What are, we have a public hearing already set for January 13th?
That's with the, that's with the selectmen, the...
This, this we have, don't need to do a joint meeting?
No, it's not in the Water Supply Protection. They will be going before the ConCom, but that will track separately and parallel.
What's our next meeting after the 7th?
So it would be the 21st of January.
Does that fit with everybody? January 21st? It's simply our second scheduled meeting in January. It's the Wednesday after Martin Luther King Day.
Right, and it's not a special permit, so a supermajority isn't required.
It isn't required, okay. So let's have a motion, that if that's okay, that that would be the, is that okay for you guys? Okay.
I'll make a motion to have a special meeting.
Ah, look at that, huh?
The 21st of January.
Time?
Seven fifteen?
Usually, so we give ourselves time to kind of get into it.
Second.
All those in, any discussion on this?
No discussion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You're all set.
Great, thank you. Why don't I have the application, the checks here for you?
Okay, excellent. And does that include the, the deposit for both the application and the deposit for the engineering?
So can you get these, I would, when do we get these to kind of...
Well, I could give them to you. I'd like to date stamp them, which I didn't.
All right, date stamp them, and then what, we just come in individually and pick them up?
Sure, if that's okay with you guys. Otherwise, I could do it right after the meeting and hand them out.
Well, let's try that, too, see how we do.
Right, and I guess the other question is, there, you know, there is some stormwater management there, a couple of constructed wetlands, and so I requested that they make a deposit for engineering review. It seemed like that would be appropriate, but again, that's up to the board.
Do we have to vote on that, don't we?
I don't think you need to, but, and if you're in agreement, then I will give that to Joe to see if he can give us a proposal.
Yeah, we made a deposit, we have a deposit.
Okay.
We've got a lot of, Joe reviews everything in Salisbury, Joe Suwaka.
Oh.
So we have a good relationship with him.
I know Joe. Okay.
Do you have the package right here, so you don't have to look it around?
That's fine, thanks.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Look forward to it. So if everything goes well, when do you want to start construction?
In the spring.
Soon.
They'll beat Angelo.
Maybe you will.
You know who we're talking about?
Thank you very much.
You too.
Have a good night.
Mr. Roush?
Do you want, do you want your stuff here?
So I think, now here again, we got something at the last minute, and I don't know if everyone had a chance to read that. So do we need to have read that?
Well, I think it's, Ginny's reviewed it. She made a couple comments on, there are two things. One is the Form F, which is basically the deposit of funds as a result of dissolving the tripartite.
Has anyone, had you, did you look at this? Were you able to read it?
Yes.
Excellent.
Did you like it?
The lawyer read it.
It was a good escrow agreement, for the 7,500, and we'll be releasing the parrotite agreement.
Now, the only thing I saw on this, and I perused it very quickly, because I just saw it, was that, and it went through the owner's obligations. If we find that somehow during the winter, the whole thing falls apart, hypothetical, I didn't see a provision for the owner, for John, to cure.
There isn't one in there.
No.
You know, if it falls apart, you have 7,500 dollars.
So then the burden to cure falls to the town?
Yes.
Wouldn't we want to be able to go back to that?
Have a lot more money.
I just, you know, so that's what I'm getting at.
Well, I think the...
I mean, I, it's highly improbable, but I'm talking about typically, you have a right to cure, instead of simply saying, well, you didn't, it didn't perform, there was a problem, and so we keep the money.
It's hard to see what the problem would be.
It is hard to see, I agree.
We've been there so long.
Yeah, I agree. But this, this coating just went on.
Well, that's why...
That's the issue.
That's, that's the issue, but that's why, you know, the board voted last time to hold up to 7,500. Discussed that with John O'Connell, and with Tim, and with Scott, and they all felt comfortable with that amount, given that the binder has been down for years, the drainage has been down there, everything is operating, and it was felt that if there are any issues, that the 7,500 would deal with that, plus there are some sidewalk repairs that we know need to be done.
So are we prohibited from going back to John and saying, John, we have the 7,500 dollars, and we'll, we'll pay for this, but, or, you know, but we'd like you to do the work?
Well, I mean, until...
Or maybe he doesn't want to do it, I'm just...
Until everything's released and the road is accepted, it's still...
Right, we're still on hook to, our goal is to get this accepted by the town, and that's not gonna happen.
All right, that's enough for me. Okay.
We would just have no performance guarantee. Just keep that in mind.
Exactly, I understand that. Okay, so if you're okay with it, then can we have a motion?
Sure. One first motion is, I would move to release on behalf of the town any interest the town may have had, or may ever have had, in the tripartite agreement covering Livingston Lane, Newbury.
Is that all we need? We need more than that?
I don't think so.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion of this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, there's a second motion to accept the escrow agreement.
To accept the escrow?
Whether we accept the escrow agreement for 7,500 dollars, pending inspection of the town in the spring, to cure any defects found.
Okay, that's the second motion. Do I have a second on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now I think we're done. You're welcome.
So, these are...
That's what happened to me, was it about a month ago?
That's the release, okay.
I couldn't talk. I had laryngitis for two days.
I have another water.
Okay, so you want, so you want all the copies signed, and then you'll take one, and we'll keep one, okay? Okay, cool. All right, so those are two copies that are released to be signed.
Does everybody sign them? Or just John? Want everybody to sign them?
Yeah, why not?
Blue, okay?
I think so.
Warm, salt water. Good, was that it? Well, you can gargle with it.
Do you want to put the dates in, or even?
Yeah, so it's today's, today's date, right, the 17th.
Execute the sale of insurance on this 17th, December. That's the notary. I left you the top.
Ah. Is this two? Do you need, does this just go with this? Oh, I see, okay.
This is just the other portion of it? So that's, that's John.
That can be John.
Is this a...
Okay, so we'll put this in an interest-bearing escrow account, and I should be getting regular statements on that, if you want to, you know, check the interest or anything at any time. Probably not. Thank you. All right, so, so, one of those. So you still need to...
Do you have any more? All set?
Yeah, I think so.
Well, this is actually the Town of Newbury Planning Board. I didn't even notice that. So this needs to be notarized by...
Do you have a notary?
I don't have a notary, so we can do that in the morning, and we'll have to hand, just change that. It's the Town of Newbury, not the City of Newburyport, didn't even notice that, but since that's a signature page. So I can have Leslie notarize that in the morning, and then I'll contact you.
And I'll swing up and pick it up?
Okay.
Excellent.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
You're welcome.
Before we go on to old business, I just, this is a quickie. The, the letter that you had drafted for EBI?
Yes.
Here's just, I don't know if this makes sense or not, but if you want to incorporate that into that language, and if it doesn't, you know what I mean, don't do it.
Okay.
So, on old business, a recap of the joint meeting with the ZBA, I guess I just open it up for discussion of all of you who, everyone was there, everyone was there, right? And get some feedback on it in general. I do, I do know that the results were that we, both boards kind of directed Martha and Sam to look at issues as they related to Plum Island in terms of heights, in terms of attics, in terms of spaces below, et cetera, and I know that Sam has sent a number of things to you in your reviewing. And then we all have a copy of this draft document that Eric put together some time ago, and that we're gonna be taking a look at that in terms of the issue of the accessories, but aside from that, I mean, it just, that's the results of it. Any, any thoughts on that, or?
I thought it was positive. I thought that it was a good meeting. I think there's a lot of stuff that needs to be completed. I don't know how, I think there's, I don't know if we have enough time, is my concern.
Well, I think that's, yeah, you know, I think that's what we're gonna probably have to do. My hope is that Sam and I can, can iron out what, you know, what those changes are, and then present them to the board at the first meeting in January, and then, you know, prioritize what will be addressed for the Springtown meeting.
One of the concerns that you raised that I wasn't aware of, I mean, going over the PIOD, was... One of the concerns that you raised that I wasn't aware of, I mean, going over the P I O D, was that it appears that there was substantial involvement with DEP in the whole process of what went on. And they had, looking at zoning issues that are out there, it's growth controls, and that if we, I guess, make some adjustments or changes, that it's a poten- it's a potential issue.
Driving by, Newburyport Planning Board, and, uh, thought I'd stop here to see if John needed me, and he said, I don't really need you, but I need your notary stamp.
Oh, isn't that convenient?
All right, well, these are the two-
He didn't call her?
No.
I just drove, I was coming home to rally for Newburyport. All right, and did I understand the name of Tyco and County of Newburyport?
Yes, called us the City of Newburyport instead of Newbury.
Oh, this says Town of Newbury, did you edit it?
It was at the end, under the notary.
Oh, wait, okay, great.
And unfortunately, it's already been signed, so.
Okay, no problem.
I don't think it's been set yet, but it's usually May.
Yeah, it's usually the, um, third Tuesday of May.
So the, you know, if we get staff work done, let's say by mid-January, there's a lot of discussion perhaps with City of Newburyport that has to occur, with DEP that has to occur, which is awfully scary, I mean, in terms of-
Given our relationship with the-
Given our rela- our relationship and our ability to get feedback in a timely fashion.
Right.
And so, um, so that, those are the concerns. I, I mean, plus-
Yes.
Wading through all this and, um, and, and hitting the deadline. So it's, it's ti- it's difficult, I think.
But we do have a, because of, I'm sure you're aware of this, but we have to hold public hearings on our zoning changes, our proposed zoning changes for the entire meeting, so we have to work kind of backwards from the meeting to like, what our drop dead last, um, cutoff time is.
Right.
And it's usually, the rule of thumb has usually been the second week in February.
So, W E I S.
Which isn't that many meetings if you think about it.
So Kathleen, based on your knowledge of what went on with P I O D, do we have to actually get DEP's approval before we take this to town meeting, or can we get it approved and then take it to?
This is why I asked the question at the meeting, because I have always been told that it was a difficult process, and it had to go through DEP and Newburyport, but I really don't know legally what we, what's required. I don't know.
Do, do, who, who might know?
Well, I think at this point it would probably be, um, you know, Doug certainly has a lot of history on this. He was involved at, at the time, but he wasn't really involved in the zoning, drafting of the zoning. I was for part of the time and then I stepped out. Um, I think at this point it might be really a question for, for Ginny, who would have to-
Go back to-
Go back and review the documents.
Would you have been involved?
And he was involved, so that, you know, that could be helpful.
We need a legal opinion on this, is what we need.
Yeah, I think, I think we do, before we really create our strategy.
Yeah.
Yeah, otherwise we're gonna be spinning our wheels.
Well, logic would dictate you'd bring in DEP early.
Right away.
Because if you go through the process of having town meeting approve it and then go to DPA.
I agree.
There was no DEP this way.
Right. And I think it was also Coastal Zone Management, too, so, you know, they were-
Now, the only thing which is potentially, is that the Chair of the Board of Selectmen has been working with CSM and DEP and Bruce Tar at the Merrimack River Beach Alliance. And, um, I mean, the, the Senator does a terrific job of cutting, I don't know if you've been to any of their meetings, but the, he, he pulls all of these people in from the Corps of Engineers to the DEP to whoever's got to be there for a meeting. And he's able to, you know, if people have these problems with certain issues, he's, he's able to solve them.
Good night.
Good night, bye-bye. So, so maybe that, maybe, uh, Jeff could help in something like when, when we really get ready to do something.
So is the first question is whether or not we have to go through DEP, or do we know that we have to?
I think it's a question we don't-
That's a legal opinion, I'm sure.
But I do think that it will be difficult to, to make any changes unilaterally, since it was drafted to, you know, encompass both communities. And with the purposes-
Have you not had any discussions with, um, with Newburyport as to whether they are considering it?
I haven't. Um, you know, they, they, they seem not to be, no, I could be wrong, but they seem not to be struggling with it in the same ways that, that we are.
But they have a different interpretation of it, that's why.
Right, and they, you know, they've developed their interpretation and they're pretty clear about it.
So can we get clarity on what is their interpretation and how does it differ? I mean, I've heard people talk about it, but I guess I don't know, here's what we do and here's what they do. Can they compare them?
Sam knows that.
Yeah, and there's some things I know just from having done projects in Newburyport as, as an architect. But for example, and I think we talked about this at the meeting, their interpretation of lot coverage is different than ours. They don't include things like decks and stairs as part of the lot coverage. It's just kind of the, just the building envelope essentially. And they also allow the, those things like decks to go into the setback, setbacks, and we don't. They've developed some pretty stringent interpretations regarding attic spaces and ensuring that they're not considered third floors. They have to have a pull-down stair.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
But we don't.
And we, we've been, you know, faced with, say, some elderly people who, you know, want to store things in their attic, but they know, you know, they, they can't access it if it's a pull-down stair. So we've been trying to determine here, are there other restrictions that we can place on it that will keep it from?
I mean, there's certainly, we were just down, near Matt and Martha's today for lunch, and, I mean, there's a, there's that three-story-
Looks like four stories.
Looks like four stories. That's under construction.
That's outside or the inside?
Outside.
That's our side.
Outside.
And it's got a hung basement.
Yeah, so I mean, it's gotta be-
But it looks like a story.
I mean, it, it, it looks like it's a four-story structure, and, you know, if I lived behind them, I wouldn't be a happy camper at all.
That's exactly what happens.
Right. So, I mean, and, um, so that's the issue with, with increasing the heights and, and-
But that's why you get that max, the max height.
Right.
Not the average.
Well, I, I, I don't want to get into that now because I think that's up to Martha and Sam to get that information to us, and then we can take a look at it and see what they think about it, so. But I thought it was a great meeting. I, I was very happy with it. I thought that it, uh, you know, and Eric and Sam and, um, was Eric, yeah, Eric, Sam and, uh-
Howie.
Howie and Martha really helped out a lot because they, they live it, you know, and I think that Eric's gonna help out the board, their board quite a bit. So have you been to any meetings since that first one you had?
Yeah.
Anybody want to add anything else to the, to that discussion? No, let's move on and talk about Caldwell Trail. No trail. So, uh, Tim Meehan has completed his work on the survey, and it's, uh, it does demonstrate that there is, um, uh, been intrusion on the part of the adjacent property owner to the Caldwell property. And a letter has been sent, has been?
I, I believe it's been sent.
Has been sent to both the property owner and to the HOA, indicating that there are infringements on the wetlands, and that people ought to come in and have a discussion with the conservation agent to see what can be done about it. There are substantial fines that are involved if-
So would it, like mowing or something? I'm trying to understand.
No, I think that it's a, I don't want to get into it because I, I, I'm not, it's the conservation departments or whatever they call it, commissions, issues. But there are both structures that are on Caldwell's properties that are been there, it looks like been there for a while, and it appears that there have been grass or things that have been put into the wetlands, and so-
Oh, I see.
Because as they've maintained the property, um, that's what's happened, so. I don't know the extent of that. We walked by twice, but I, I'm not a wetlands guy, so I, I just know that when we did, Doug said, whoa, look at that, you know? So, so that's the issue. So I think that those two parties are going to be meeting with Doug sometime in the next couple of weeks to try to resolve this. And so I think the discussion of trail, it takes a second seat or a backseat to that until that's resolved. The master plan, uh, do you want to say anything about the master plan, what we're gonna do next?
No, you're doing a great job.
Well, we, we met with, uh, we had a meeting scheduled with, uh, Tracy and with Jeff. Tracy, meaning the Town Administrator, and Jeff, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, last week, and Tracy was tied up in litigation issues. Excuse me, but Jeff did meet with us and we had a good talk about the kinds of individuals who he felt made sense to have on, um, the committee. But we also kind of agreed that we, what we really need to do was put this RFP or RFQ or whatever we're going to call it out into the uh, community and see what kind of response we get, uh, from consultants. And so Martha and I are gonna be working on that over the next couple of days, or, well, just maybe before the holidays and try to get it out over the holidays. And there are a number of consultants who, um, are doing very great work, and so we want to make sure it's in their hands. And then with that in hand, we'll then also move, I think, hand in hand with looking for a consultant and looking for the people to be on the committee. One of the things we're looking at is whether, as we've seen in other places, all members of the planning board are on the committee, and then the planning board meets for the first hour and others come in, either on the committee and we discuss the master plan and then they leave, and then we discuss our business. And so, that's one way that we're looking at it, and I think that might not be a bad way to proceed. But anyway, we haven't, we'll chat it up with everybody when we figure that out, but-
But for the consultants, we do want to get RFQs, correct?
Yeah. RFQ with, um, maybe a price in a separate document. Does that make sense to you?
Yes, yeah.
Is that about it?
I think you should do every other meeting.
Oh, excuse me, I, I think, you know what, that's exactly, after we talked it through with Jeff, he said, you don't want to do it every meeting, you want to do it every other meeting, so. Once a month, once a month, bring the, the committee in to discuss things. And then, of course, we do, what I'm amazed at is that there's no mandate from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to update the master plan, but there is a mandate to update the Open Space and Recreation Plan. Go figure.
It's different.
I know. But it's, you know, uh, who, who was around when in the Dukakis administration? That somehow got this one in but couldn't get the mandate for the update of the master plan? I don't know.
That's strange.
It is strange, isn't it? I mean, every other, I mean, Florida has it, California has it, I mean-
They all mesh together, too.
Anyway, so, uh, but whatever consultant we have would also be doing an update to the Open Space, which is only, you know, that was completed in oh-nine with oh, you know, pretty current data. The master plan was completed in oh-six, but with two thousand data, so it's, I think, a bit out of date. What's the last guy here? Oh, the, oh, the recap of the joint meeting with Selectmen Municipal Building Committee. What would you think? You were there. NBC Municipal Building Committee?
Oh, for the-
Eric.
Yeah, what did I think about it?
Yeah.
He's catching me, because he knows what I think about it, so I don't know why he's asking me on TV. He's, he's, he's being, he doesn't-
All right, I, I thought it was a, a, a very good meeting. Not as good as the first one we had, which was at the library, which seemed to really get a lot of information out. And this was, I think, going over other issues. But the most important thing about the meeting was that we had new information, and that is that the fire department is offered up a discussion about the sale of the property, which is adjacent to their property, um, behind us. Which, last year, when Martha and Eric were working on this project, it was off the table. And so putting that back on the table, I just simply makes it a much easier thing to study.
It does.
Because it increases the square, it doubles the amount of square footage you can deal with in terms of land, and those individuals who were concerned about this site because they thought it was tight, you know, you no longer have that argument because you have another piece of property that's, in fact, a little bit larger than this to work with. And so, um, I guess, uh, Martha, have you met since then as a, as a group?
Uh, no, we're trying to set up the next meeting. Currently, it's, um, scheduled for January sixth.
Oh, okay. So we have a sense for where you're going?
Right, we were trying to do it before that, but it just didn't work with people's schedules, so.
Okay.
Was size the primary concern with the site?
Parking was really the concern, parking and-
It was so tight.
And growth.
Couldn't get enough-
I thought we were like short, were we short like four, seven spaces or something?
And they, you know, and they do, they did come up with alternatives to increase the amount of parking.
Well, he, he then made a present, in his presentation, he said that we've figured it out and we can fit in, but you know, just looking around, that it's tight.
My only concern with that new information is, is that I don't believe the public understands the, um, quality of the building and how it really needs major work, and I'm afraid that it's gonna end up being a new police station and some grenades on this one, and we're gonna have an issue.
I think that we are going to have an issue. I think there's been enough discussion that I've heard from individuals so that I think that the town has got a major education and public information process about what are the issues about this building and why it's not a fifty-year building.
And how it's gonna cost us more money if we keep on operating at this pace.
And so, and so that's part of the process, because otherwise, yes, you can see that I think that there's a strong amount of support for a, uh, police station and the support, I think, for the town hall, but I think we have to work on it. So that's, that's a job.
Just as a question, uh, would it be an idea to set up maybe of, to try to get some information on getting a professional public relations outfit? Because I, as I understand it, there was things that were defeated in the past to try to improve things, the town doesn't-
I've actually mentioned that, too, in the past.
What was the reaction?
At the time, it was a different board, different, um, I don't even remember, so.
Right, right, I think-
It's just-
Very, very different board.
Yeah, it's different, it's different.
It, it might be possible. And was it also before Tracy came? I don't know.
Um, yes, it was.
That's gonna be your biggest bottleneck.
It already is.
Right, and, and I, I, it's not, it's not, it, it's public information and getting public information out.
Right.
Most of the overrides have not been, um, promoted. And I don't know, I, what role can a, an elected official can promote, but a employee cannot? Is that right about the campaign?
I don't know.
I think it's true. I think if you are an elected official, you can campaign for a-
You can act on behalf of the town.
And act on behalf of the town, say, I, I urge you.
Correct.
But if you go out, you cannot do that, I think.
Yeah, I mean, we do have to be very careful. I know that they, they were planning to put a mailer in with the tax bills and it had to be reviewed. We can't, we can provide information, but we can't advocate for it.
Through the act of governance, you can't promote something.
That's why they couldn't use the, um, school email distribution list when they were trying to promote the override.
Right, right.
Because it was campaigning for it.
That has to be done, it's a campaign.
Yes.
But public information can go out in the tax bill.
Right, right. But for the last override, there was a whole group that was formed that was, was that a, was that a five oh one C three, or was it?
I don't remember. But it was formed specifically for the campaigning of the override.
Right.
Yeah.
You're right. Um, so-
You know, there's been a lot of focusing on construction and what works and what doesn't work, but if you can't get it by the voters, you're not going anywhere.
I, I think it's an excellent point and it should be brought up again.
Yeah.
And again, I'm not sure that the town could, could hire that person, or whether it would have to be an independent group that would hire that person.
But I would think that if it's just purely, if you're just talking about educating on this situation, then the town should be able to.
There, there are-
But there's a fine line.
I'm almost sort of-
There is?
I would think there gets to be a fine line between advocating, education and advocating, to make sure that it didn't cross that line.
There's two, there's two, there's two ways. You, you, you can go out and you can have a public meeting like Eric did, and you can present all the facts.
No one's gonna go, though.
Interesting. You can do that. And, um, it's not campaigning, but as soon as you ask to, I want your vote for this, then you have a problem. Anyway, we don't know, and it's not, candidly, it's not our responsibility. It is the Town Administrator and- It is the town administrator and.
Selectmen.
Selectmen and, but I'm sure, I'd be happy to chat with them about it. Any other thoughts on that meeting?
Well, when somebody comes in from Byfield and says, we don't know what's going on. Of course, we had a meeting in Byfield, but the people in Byfield wanted to know what's going on. Apparently, what was his name, Davis came in, Mr. Davis?
Fred Davis.
Fred Davis? And he asked a rational question.
No, Fred's questions were fine.
Yeah.
Fine, absolutely fine.
I think though, that when they have these meetings, like we had that joint meeting before, that they shouldn't open it up for comments and questions to the public at that time. I think they should have a separate meeting, because what that does is that kind of takes up more time for the meeting and less discussion between the committee members. It's not my call though, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, I don't know what the right thing is, but.
The, the committee is planning to, for the additional workshops, probably, you know, do one in Byfield, do one in Plum Island, so we can, you know, try to get it covered as well as possible.
But we all know the turnout's gonna be poor.
Well, I think, I think that the, if they've, I think the mailers will go out like in, when do they go out, January first?
Yeah, it's actually not gonna go with the tax bill, it's gonna go with the census, I think.
What is the mailer going to be?
The tax bill is always the best.
Is it just?
An informational, you know, basically, it's going to be a, you know, a two-sided sheet summarizing the workshop information.
I see.
Okay, any other thoughts on that meeting?
Nope.
George? No? All right, so then let's get to the accessory bylaw.
Okay, and.
And let's talk about it.
In connection, I have a holiday gift.
Thank you.
You have what? This is brand new?
So this?
Oh yeah, my other one is, is a year old.
Okay. All right, I had some stuff on there. That's fine, sure.
Okay, what's this one? So the best way to do this, I think, is, does everyone, if you have a copy of the zoning code and you have Eric's, Eric's suggested approach.
I find these, I found this confusing when I was trying to go back over it today.
I did too and then I, I had more time than you did. And I was able to get back into it and I began to understand it better. So I think. Were you able to go through it, George?
I did.
You did?
Not closely, but.
Yeah, so, and Martha, did you go through it?
I'd gone through it before, I haven't had a chance to go through it again.
I'm gonna move him now. Last chance, do you want to take one?
Let's take this guy.
John, I think you got the only one without any calories in it.
This one. I'm gonna put it down. No, I'll put the top one.
They're a little sticky.
Keep it down under the table.
You guys don't like?
Not for me.
Oh, yeah. Look at this Elizabeth, she has such discipline. Such discipline. All right. My biggest problem when I was looking at this was I said, well, how are we gonna go about this? And. I guess we just go through it page by page. What do you think? Is that? I don't know else to do.
Yeah, it seems reasonable.
Yeah, so let me just find, here it is. Here's the accessory apartment in the original. And so his first comment is in the purpose and intent. And in purpose and intent A, recognize that housing needs of the town are changing and that zoning bylaws must be crafted to allow greater flexibility. And I think he's questioning the word flexibility. And he doesn't suggest other words, but I read this to say, well, it's really not flexibility, it's choices. Do you agree with that?
I don't really care.
Am I right about that?
I don't know why flexibility would be giving them trouble though, that's what I was trying to understand.
Yeah, the only thing, you know, at first when I started reading this, I said, oh wait, wait a minute, we spent a lot of time on this and, you know, we, we, we thought we knew what we were doing. But he's been struggling with this now for about six months. And so I said, well, it means he's, he's got a problem with it, you know?
And I was trying to figure out what his problem was.
Yeah, but flexibility, I mean, when we're creating the ability to have an accessory apartment as a, either within the unit, within the structure, or in a detached structure, we are trying to create greater flexibility to give more choices to people in the town of Newbury.
Do you think maybe his issue is that flexibility conveys that there's some discretion?
I think that's what it is.
And so that it's not.
So why don't we say choices?
That it's something more concrete.
So choices, George?
How about options?
And I hate to do this to every word, but.
Yeah, it is, because you can think of the word latitude, you can think of any number of words that give discretion.
Right.
But it has to be defined at some point, it has to be capped one way or the other.
Well, I'm gonna suggest choices and I'm then gonna punt it to Martha.
Maybe we expand it instead of it saying greater flexibility, fill both, both those words out into allow, allow additional choices?
Within guidelines.
I think additional options.
Additional options.
Yeah, within guidelines.
And forget the greater, the greater.
I think the greater creates a problem too.
Greater's a problem, just say additional options in the provision of housing.
Is the copier on? It's okay.
Did you just check it?
Do you need it?
Nope, sorry, I'm just asking, I don't want you to get up at all.
It's probably sleeping.
So the remainder of that purpose and intent has nothing from him. Does anybody want to add anything on that?
Yes, I, I'd like to just talk a little bit about paragraph B. To me, this, this is what I find most confusing in here, and I think you and I had discussed this once before, John. When we talk, it says, provide homeowners with a means of obtaining rental income, companionship and so forth and so. I think it's really important, for me at least, to understand it. Are we talking about blood relatives or are we only talking about, are we talking about non-blood relatives being allowed access to the accessory buildings, accessory apartments?
Non, non-blood.
Okay, it does allow non-blood, all right.
We, we, the reason why is originally they were looking at in-law apartments. But the problem is if there's someone passes away, what do you do with that? They end up renting them anyways. So they decided that that's what they want, that's how we, we're starting in one direction and we ended up in that one.
It was just a question, it was not a suggestion. I didn't really understand.
Just explaining.
Okay.
Okay.
Some communities require that the owner then take the apartment out if it's not being.
And that's silly.
But that just seems terribly onerous.
And, and we, anyway, we think this is a good thing. All right, next page starts with, I guess, a, well, you gotta start at the bottom. Accessory apartment applicability, which he then is reordering. If you go to the original, which is a six sentence, or a six-line paragraph, he's then pulled this out into, I guess, A's, B's, C's and D's. And I will say it was here that I did have some difficulty and I wasn't sure. Anybody have any thoughts about what he's done here and whether it clarifies or obfuscates?
Well, first of all, I think, I think a reasonable question is to ask the board, how do they, well, the question he's asking here is, what is the intended difference between a two-family and an attached accessory apartment? Now, there are some restrictions in terms of size, but really, doesn't this allow a rezoning in effect to, it into a two-family, what is normally a one-family zoning into a two-family? How, how do you want to differentiate that?
Well.
Oh, that's where they're coming from.
I didn't answer that question, it's what I'm saying, because it's gonna come up.
Well, a two-family, I, I guess, I don't know that we have it defined, do we have a definition of two-family in the back?
Yes, we do.
I think we do, in fact, he, he referenced it. And what we were specifically trying to do with this provision was not create a two-family house, was to create a primary house that was substantially larger than the other unit that was gonna be created.
So that would be the major, that would be the biggest distinction.
Maybe we don't, we don't, we've got two families and we have.
So a two-family can have, like, there are a couple being built on Parker, is it Parker?
Hanover.
Hanover Street.
Where they're, you know, 2,200 square feet, 2,200 square feet, they're exactly the same.
Would it be under another location?
Oh, residents, two families, single structure, fixed removal, providing complete independent living facilities for not more than two families.
So that doesn't tell you anything.
So that doesn't really do it.
So we might have to refine that a little better. So, but that's the general intent, but what our definition says apparently is it allows you to do, have, you know, unequal. It doesn't say they have to be the same, but generally speaking, they are when a developer builds them, they are usually the same.
Okay, so the biggest distinction would be in terms of size of the apartment relative to the primary.
I think so, I think so.
That, mhm.
We may find some resistance to that.
George, I'm gonna ask you specifically, you see what he's done here is disaggregate the paragraph.
Didn't he just add, change the heading? Because it appears that the other ones all match up except for.
No, what he's done is that he's taken.
Where's his general requirements A?
No, 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 you, you've gone, you've gone too far.
No, because two.
He's, he's under.
The paragraph, within the paragraph?
See.
He's broken it down into.
Go, go back to the first page.
Right.
And, and he's at number two.
Yeah.
Accessory apartment applicability.
Right.
So if you go to the document, see all those six lines? What he's done, he's taken those six lines and he's created A, B, C and D, in a way.
You mean this paragraph right here?
He's taken that and gotten rid of it and replaced it with.
Oh, I see, okay.
With A, B, C and D.
Next time we're gonna request that he marks up the actual document.
I know, I know, well, he, he did.
He did.
He did, but it's.
Though, like, take the document and insert red lines in it.
Believe me, this is the most difficult part of it, because it, I'm not sure it makes sense.
Because what I thought what he was doing is if you look at the headings under number two, it says like A, general requirements, and then B, and then C, I thought that those were matching up, but that's not what he's doing. Okay.
Yes, he will eventually match them up, but the first thing he's done is taken a very general kind of, the building inspector shall issue a building permit, basically giving you the authority aspect of this to the building inspector and then the zoning board of appeals. He's taken that out and gone instead, accessory, he's defined it. And accessory apartments are deemed to be either within an existing or new residence or detached. So he's given an omnibus definition to start with, and then he has subsets here.
Makes sense.
And, and it is good, right? Then he has subsets, it says accessory apartments within an existing or new owner occupied single-family residence may be authorized by the building inspector. So he's then going back to that first sentence in the other one and saying, so I'm okay with that, but then, when general requirements listed below, I've just changed that, are met. But then he has similar language for the detached. And I just think that those two together are very confusing.
Well, the problem that they're having right now is that first paragraph, they're having, applicants don't understand it when they're coming through.
Right, 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 and, and, but, but each one then says, permit, when the following conditions are met. When the following conditions are met, so you said, well, where am I? And, and, and the conditions don't say the right thing, they should be saying general requirements. It should say here, and that's the fault of this document to begin with, because that said conditions and requirements.
So, okay, so I think what then we would need to do is further write when the following general.
General conditions.
General and specific requirements are met in A and.
As, as listed below.
Yeah, or reference those section numbers.
So be very, so I said here, when, when the general requirements listed below in section two A are met. I mean, and the only thing is, are you then comfortable with leaving the C in, even though I think it's confusing? But for the time being, I think we should, no more I think.
Well, if you think it's confusing, why?
Well, because I think it could easily, the, when you, the whole discussion of detached really doesn't happen until you get to page five of six.
But isn't that why he's putting it up front?
Well, why?
I would do that because that would, I think the point is, is that when, if you read this.
That's the permission part?
Well, say, say you're only interested in the detached. So you get detached and you, we're gonna tell them where to go.
Yeah, I agree.
So I can skip.
But it doesn't say that.
No, but we added it.
Ah, right, 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 right. So, so accessory apartments detached from an existing single-family dwelling may be authorized by the zoning board of appeals with the granting of special permit issued. And it, see, this says granted when the following conditions and requirements are met.
So we just make the same changes conceptually to C that you just made to B and, and.
But, but see, and, and, and I'm, I don't have, I know, I don't have to be married to this. But then that leads you to A below, because there's the general requirements. So you go through all of that. So what I'm more comfortable with is saying, you just go to the detached accessory apartments and you say, all detached apartments shall meet the general requirements as set forth before, previously, plus these new ones.
Set your conditions first.
Yeah. So that's my confusion, and I don't have an answer.
I do think what he's done though does help clarify, because reading that, that one paragraph, I think it's not, not totally clear.
So here's what we should do, let's go back to what Elizabeth was saying, let's just do this and go along with it.
Yeah, what if you were to say with C, the conditions in both, and I don't have the proper phrases, but is it two? Two A?
It's two, as well as the C.
And CB.
Well, right, but then it's also.
What if you say?
Two A, B.
No, B is not, B is, is attached. It's two A.
Oh, so it's the general, it's two A.
Two A and C, and C, and C, two A and C, okay?
So the, the following general and specific requirements are met.
Two A and C, two C are met.
I wouldn't even say following, I'd take out following and just say the conditions, because maybe that's what's confusing people because then they don't.
Let's try that. Okay, so what were you gonna say?
What's?
Line B?
General.
The following in the, the end?
When the following, when the, when the general requirement set forth below, do you want to say that now?
Or the gen, the general requirements.
General requirements.
And specific requirements.
When the general requirements and then the specific.
Or you could even just say the conditions and requirements in.
Of the sections.
Two A and C and that.
Yep.
Okay, that's good, I like that. General requirements.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Two. Okay. Two, C, okay. Then he has inserted something here which I don't think, I think this is new, I hadn't seen this. A property owner may appeal the denial of the building, building requirement for an accessory apartment within an existing or new owner occupied single-family residence by seeking a variance.
That's because it gets confusing between the special permit and that, that's why he put that, I believe that's why.
He says, he says he needs it.
That's why.
It is new language and we don't have any language about variance, seeking variance, you know?
One of the, one of the other points that was mentioned, it was, the board was a little bit confused because now they're granting authority where before they weren't. So this is kind of just clarifying what they're doing at what time, I believe. They're coming in for a special permit, that means that requirement otherwise.
Okay, that, that's fine, that helps them, that's good, that's good.
Before we go on to, so I understand under, Eric's comment under A.
A up top?
Yep, you know, by adopting that language, would we be changing the status quo? I mean, basically we're saying that you can't create a new res, a new, you couldn't build new, like old, the.
Detached?
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, no, that, that's the point. Are we saying, someone has raised this question and Eric raised it, are we saying that if you build a new house today?
Right, exactly.
Can you build an accessory apartment on that?
According to our bylaw, we can.
That changes.
So that language, so that language.
According to our bylaw, yeah.
And he asked that question further, so.
Because originally.
So it just had to say existing or new res. So it just had to say existing or new residence.
Well, it says that in B, doesn't it?
Martha, originally, weren't we just gonna do, we changed it, 'cause originally our intent was just to use old structures, and then we went ahead and changed it to allow new structures, right?
Where's the, I thought it did, Richard, but yet, yet I don't see it.
In B, accessory apartments within an existing or new owner occupied, single, single-family residence.
Does.
Wouldn't...
So you have to have that in, in, in the, um, so this is, let's go back, accessory apartments within an existing or new owner occupied, that's it. Accessory apartments and detached from an existing...
Right, there's the distinction between detached and within, and B is within, which is consistent with A, but C, which is talking about detached. If you circle back to A.
So you can build, so you can buil- this says you can build one within, but you can't, you can't build a new one without, is that the way we've always had it?
No.
No.
Say, say it again, I'm getting confused.
It's, it says...
Read A, that's...
Read A in, in the document or his?
Read Eric, Eric's A, that would end up changing, I think, what the current status quo is.
Yeah.
Right, because he's saying detached can only be done with an existing residence.
And I think that's not what...
He's wrong, he's wrong.
Right, so I, I just think he doesn't know, so we have to change that, change his language to say it's...
Existing or new.
Ex- uh, existing or n-... Within an existing or new residence or detached from an existing or new residence.
That would correct.
Yeah. Okay.
'Cause then one's gonna, 'cause that, all someone has to do is build a structure and then come in later, wait a period and then come in.
Right, right, right.
That's true.
That's all they have to do.
Right. Okay, with those elements, and we'll go to the general requirement section.
Yeah, but can I just make one?
Yep.
You're saying the same thing, could we just say within or detached from an existing or new residence?
Wha- wha- but what, what is it?
We'd say... Oh, rather than repeating.
Rather than repe- sure, 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 sure. A little more elegant. Okay?
I think that's why he wrote, wrote that, Martha, because of this right here.
Right, but he's, the intent of that paragraph was not to limit...
New construction.
New construction.
I think he's reading that, and this is what he was saying when he reads these documents, it gets confusing.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
How did you phrase that, actually? Within an existing or...
Within or detached from...
Within.
Existing in or detached from.
An ex- no, an existing...
Detached from an existing or new residence.
Sorry. Right, 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 within, so they're both, so they're both caps, I know.
Right.
We, sorry, I think we've put everyone to sleep. You are? Talk about arcane stuff, huh? Okay. I wouldn't be proud of that. That's what George used to do every day.
Pardon? Go ahead, say it again.
Okay, so, excuse me?
I'm eating, on camera.
Gen- we're going to general requirements, uh, A, and so, um, the accessory apartment will be a complete separate. He gets rid of house keeping, keeping, says dwelling unit, I, I'm fine with that. Anybody ever, that's okay, okay, so they were okay with that. Two, the owners of the residence in which the accessory apartment is created must continue to occupy the, and he eliminates at least one of the dwelling units as their primary dwelling unit, except for bona fide temporary absence. The building permit or special permit, that's clarification.
Well, what he's, what he's saying is he's restricting the owner, um, saying that the owner has to live in a primary, and we had specifically said that they should be able to live either.
So, so that's incorrect.
Right.
So, because there are many instances where a primary would be in a large, let's say, three thousand square feet, and their children move into the fifteen hundred, and then they say, you know what, they wanna have all the kids, we'll move into the fifteen hundred and let the kids have the three thousand, so...
Or for financial reasons, someone might move into small ones, right?
So we, we, I don't think we have a problem with that.
Well, I think we don't wanna change it, we don't wanna...
We don't wanna change it.
Don't change.
So let's, um... Must continue to occupy...
One of the dwellings.
At least one, one of the dwelling units as their primary dwelling unit, one of the dwelling units as their... I think what we had is better, but you can, if you wanna just suggest some new, cleaner language...
I was just gonna say, must continue to occupy one of the dwelling units, except for, I... I mean, I, I understand having, I understand why residence gets confusing and he's, why he's put in dwelling, um, must continue. But I don't, I mean, somebody made a really good point. I don't know how you enforce that, I mean, so I don't know if it's just, if it's easier to say, the owners of the residence in which the accessory apartment is created must continue to occupy one of the dwelling units, except for bona fide temporary absences of six months or less. Right, I mean, that was, that was, yeah, that was...
I like that.
And it just, it's saying the same thing.
Okay, okay.
John, I would just wanna ask a question, uh, I mean, what you're doing is really setting up a situation that would be extremely difficult to police. I mean, Sam Jocelyn has enough things to do without checking on who's gone when. As, as a possible method of reducing, uh, this sort of a problem, I mean, I'm just asking this as a question. Could it be in either the census or the tax bill that they have to sign something to the effect that they're, that they are in, that they are under...
They're in compliance.
Can you, can you repeat that, what's...
It's interesting.
What don't you like about it right now?
No, no, he's just saying as a, as a method of ensuring compliance and enforcement, that you have something in the tax bill that says, we note that you have a two-family...
Yeah, and being taxed.
With an in-law, we wanna verify that you're still living there, and so they just get it back and sign by that, so that nobody has to go out and do a check on it.
Yeah, that doesn't mean that they won't do it, but they'll think long enough.
I just don't know how many...
'Cause people don't lie, that's why, that's why Sam does that, though.
Writing is different, when you put it in writing...
Because you're legally...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think originally we did have a provision that they needed to sign something, and if there was a transfer of ownership, um...
Oh, we did have that.
Basically, yeah, and I'm not...
Hold on, we had that.
We did have that, and I'm not quite sure what...
Where, what happened to that, we...
And I'm just checking, I don't...
I can remember arguing that point with David.
And I don't, I can't remember now if it was something, something that seemed like would be owners, both for the owner and for the town to keep track of, but there was something that had to be recorded, the registry.
That's it, that they're still living in the premises, first if they, they're moved out or something?
If you're gonna make it a requirement, then there should be some method of determining it, otherwise it's an empty threat, but if they put it in writing, they're much less likely.
Yeah, we had that, we had that recorded, let me check back on some of the earlier drafts.
I remember in the meetings.
We had, we had very specific language in there that if they, that they had to, it's like a license, they had to verify that they had the sunny...
Yeah, 'cause David didn't, David wanted it, didn't he? Yeah.
Could you check on that then, Martha, 'cause I think we're not sure, but we did have language that would help, okay, all right?
That sounds like something that would have been called, uh, by...
General requirement, all right, we were in that, that's where we are.
I have one more question on that.
Do you have new language for us?
For the sec- are we in the second sentence, or you jumped out?
Zero, I'm in, uh, O two.
Okay, the second sentence, okay, that's my question, so...
Okay, what is that?
Um, I, I think I'm okay with it, the first couple of changes, but then for the last part of the sentence, if the owner no longer occupies, I'd keep one of the dwelling units.
Yeah.
But my question is, um...
Drop primary.
Yeah, um, and keep the S on units, um, but is a building per-... Many, the, the point is, and it goes to Richard's point, is to, is it, is that this can, that there's some teeth to this condition? There's, but at some point, I mean, once, once it's built, you don't need a building permit, right?
Right, but the building permit refers to the new construct, um, let me just think.
It says building permit or special permit.
Right, but the special permit is for the detached, and the building permit is for the accessory, so...
Then you're occupancy permit.
You don't, you don't have them anymore because you don't need them, 'cause you're constructive.
But they have to get their occupancy permits, that's maybe the final step, wouldn't it, before they actually move in?
Right, but assuming somebody's moved in, and then they're living there for a couple of years, and then something happens and they move out, they're no longer occupying. The owner is no longer occupying, they're renting both, does, I just didn't know if the way the building permit and the special permit works... I think that goes back to what we're talking about before, so, you know, some sort of written certification that would, basically...
Could you have a buil- a special permit that's got, you know, for five years?
A special permit?
A special, we don't do that, do we?
No, because they're gonna have built this, once it's built, it's built.
That's what I mean, I almost wonder if the second sentence...
But the special permit is, is...
So I, I'm pretty confident that we had something in there, and it was in there, and I bet during Ginny's review or somebody's review, it was pulled.
We had something, we, I think we did.
Because it, I remember it, and there had to be a reason why we pulled it. So we're just gonna look it up.
So my only question is whether, once it's built, whether this, you're not gonna have somebody occupying it before it's built, and then once it's built, do you need these permits and does this matter, I mean...
The per- well, the permits are gonna be closed out, so you, once you have your occupancy permit, it's like, it'd be the last of that, so all that doesn't matter. That's why this other language is what we, that we cut out previously, is what, what we had in place for that reason.
Right, understood, but I just, if that's the case, then I think the sentence is pointless.
Yeah, 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 it is, it is.
It doesn't matter.
You know what?
Once they're done, they're done.
Yeah, it doesn't...
No one's gonna come in and enforce it after that.
Right, so, let's take the sentence.
Yeah.
So that's the language we did put in, the zoning, he, the zoning permit for the accessory apartment automatically will lapse, nor lapses if the owner no longer occupies the unit, that's what we put in.
Right.
That's what our language is.
And it wasn't the building permit, it was the special permit.
Right.
If there is a certificate that the owner has to sign every year, or every two years, saying, I'm still doing this and I understand the obligations, no one can say, oh, I didn't know, or I forgot.
Instead of putting in building permit or special permit, would you wanna put in occupancy permit, yeah, the occupancy permit?
Right, so do we wanna take that last sentence out?
Unless, as Richard suggests, that there's another thing that we can substitute, such as...
The occupancy permit is permanent.
Make it enforceable.
Along the lines we just discussed, in other words, people would have to certify that, uh, they're in compliance.
And, and, and that's where we're saying that Sam's never gonna have the time to do that.
Well, no, he won't, but if people have to sign, as I said before, if people have to sign, they're much...
Let's think of some language about that.
Okay.
Richard, suggest something on your writing and get some, and let Martha have it, and we'll see if we can include something about it.
And I'll, I'll check on what language we might have had before, and maybe it's actually something that we can tie into assessors.
No, no, it was not.
We had something more than that.
Had more teeth.
It's what we agreed to in the end.
Yeah, but why do we change it, though? There's a reason why we changed it.
Because we went back and forth and decided that this was all we could get. But anyway, let's, let's see what it looks like.
I mean, the point is, what can you take away, once it's built, what can you take away?
He built or occupy.
You can't take away, you just have to make sure they're not doing it.
Right, so...
Okay, all right, let, next page, moving along, so...
Can you, I have to go back to what you're saying, can't you take away the occupancy permit, isn't that your, that's what it is?
It's your ultimate, though.
That's, that's what it is, that's what it is.
If it's, if it's not occupied properly, the building inspector has the right to take away the occupancy.
If that's the case, then I think Richard's suggestion of substituting occupancy permit for building permit or special permit stops a problem.
Okay.
And then the, there's the other suggestion of, okay, how do you collect your information in order to figure out how to enforce it, but this would be...
John, I asked me to look into this, and I'm gonna look into it with Martha, but I'm also gonna check with the, with the tax, tax people here to see if...
Assessors department?
Assessors department, to see if that can be implemented into the tax bill, if, if that's reasonably possible, I will check into that.
Interesting.
You wanna talk to Michelle?
Yeah, you wanna talk to Michelle.
All right.
Well, now it's, it's here, right?
No, oh, she moved?
Well, yeah, she's...
She moved?
Yeah.
Yeah, she moved.
Oh.
Okay, page three, eight twenty-five, aiming for nine o'clock. So these, all these, um, purple, oh, you don't have purple, but all of these, um, in, under ninety-seven eleven administration, these are all items that were in our definitions at the end of the zoning code that he, I guess, is suggesting be brought forward.
Is, is, well, is he suggesting that they bring, be brought forward, or that they be revised, and stay in ninety-seven eleven?
He, no, because he hasn't suggested any new language.
He, he said need to keep the terms straight.
Right, all I'm saying, so I've gone through, and I've looked at all of these accessory apartments, dwelling unit, residence, residence, single-family, and they're the exact same language as are in the back, uh, under definitions.
Oh, I think, is, is he referring to, though, within the document, and within the bylaw, that we keep them straight?
I, I...
I think that's what it was, 'cause sometimes we talk about dwelling unit, and sometime we talk about...
One of the major things that he found was, for example, we reference property in some, one of these, and he said, we have no definition of property, we do de- define a lot. And he said, so either you use something that you've defined or don't use it, and, so that's good, but I don't know what he meant here at all. I mean, he's...
He didn't say.
I mean, he just didn't say.
I mean, is he just, I, I interpreted that he was saying, you need to keep these terms straight and use them consistently, these are the definitions. I assume those definitions were lifted from somewhere else and dropped in, but...
These definitions here are right here.
Right.
And they're verbatim.
Okay, and that's what I assumed.
Right, he didn't change them at all, they're all, they all come from our...
He, he said there's no dwelling unit, though, and he's saying that you're, if you're gonna use that, just put a definition in.
Uh, let me see if we have a dwelling unit, I think we have a dwelling unit.
We do have a dwelling, I think.
We have a dwelling unit.
'Cause it says right here, right in here, he says, definition says dwelling unit, there's no definition for dwelling unit.
That would be wrong.
He says no definition for dwelling. For dwelling.
Dwelling.
Yeah.
So basically, we could use the term dwelling.
Dwelling unit.
Yeah, so dwelling unit, we have, and we have dwelling multifamily, so we have all these things in all of the back, okay? So, can, can I just say, Martha, you and Sam go through and make sure that we're using the correct terms as he's suggesting here, and then we can just, not, say that this section is done. Is that okay with everybody, you know what I mean?
Okay, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Doing three, nine thirty.
Yeah.
Okay, then let's get to O three, um, and then he's inserted... Owner shall be one of the more individuals residing in a dwelling who holds title, and for whom the dwelling is the primary residence, is what he's putting in.
And I would put period after residence and cut out voting and tax purposes, so the primary residence is...
Oh, so that's where he's saying, we may not have a definition for primary residence. 'Cause that, that's a question, it's not a change.
Where is he posing the question, so...
He doesn't, he just, what he's done, so you don't...
Yeah, no, I think, and so I would, I would just add unit, so that, 'cause that's what he's complaining about, dwelling is not defined, but dwelling is.
Okay, okay.
So, wasn't that, wasn't that put in that language, I can't remember that, because I wanna make sure they live here more than six months of the year.
But isn't that what primary residence means?
Yeah.
I, I don't know, I don't know why they added it, but yes, well...
That's fine, so I think dwelling unit is the primary residence for, and what did you say, you wanna give a, primary residence?
It's, I don't know how you define a primary residence, but...
For voting or tax purposes, any reason to keep voting?
It's or, though, not and.
Any, any reason to do that?
To strike.
No, no, to keep it in, strike it, okay. All right, four. Again, primary dwelling. So he's questioning primary dwelling as a definitional term. So, then that just goes up to...
Is he, so if it, if that's purple, I'm sorry, is that, if it's purple, is he suggesting it, or just highlighting it to us? I think he's highlighting it.
Just so that you know, I have this over here.
This will never happen again, Elizabeth, this will never, ever happen again. When, I, I won't, I can't, I'm not gonna deal with this again.
No.
No, those are comments.
The purple is a comment, and, all right, so he's just saying, I'm flagging this, all right? And so, what I found interesting is that no one was questioning our numbers. And so, what I found interesting is that no one was questioning our numbers. Sam said I have no problem with your numbers, I thought you, I thought we're gonna have to defend them.
Yeah, I had thought so too.
I'm sorry, John, I didn't hear what you said.
You weren't supposed to hear me.
Usually that's not, usually that's not a problem.
So I think that what he's done here though is good, he's taken the, uh, math calculations out of it and he's kind of shown them as, here's what you are.
Yep.
That makes sense, don't you agree, Martha? Okay, so we're okay with that. So O five and then O six. No more than one accessory apartment may be created as. There shall be no more than two dwelling units in a structure and no more than two dwelling units in a, on a single family lot.
I think that's because someone came in and they were gonna, they actually were, had three apartments. Two, no, a house with two, two apartments, I think that's where that comment came from.
Well, he's actually making changes here. 'Cause he's taking, striking out language and adding. New language and simplifying.
Are you talking about the six, number six?
Six, yeah, it's all, he's saying it's a redundant section and, and sentence and I, I'll take George and, and. Elizabeth's, it's my wife's name, I should remember. Alright, you guys okay with that?
Can we go back to O five for a second on the comment where it says on the third line down, primary dwelling, are we dealing with dwelling unit again? Or primary residence?
Well, it's actually.
It's getting confusing.
But it is two separate things and one is your primary residence, 'cause that's where you live.
Right.
All the time, or most of the time, primary dwelling is the primary dwelling on the lot. So, I mean, they're not, they're not, they're not interchangeable.
They're not interchangeable and what we do need is Martha and Sam to go through this and read and make sure we have proper definitions.
Yeah, because we're talking about dwelling units everywhere else.
I like numbers better.
O six.
I'm a little confused about his.
No, you can't have more than one accessory, there can't be three units.
I think that we should just go through and she's gonna, and Martha and Sam will come up with their mockup and we'll review it again and we'll take another stab at it. I don't think you're gonna get it all tonight.
No, no, I, I don't think we will either, but I, I wanna give them direction on, on this, and then O six, I think it's a simplification and I, I think it makes sense.
And when we have the document next to him, we'll have the entire bylaw together.
I understand his concern, I'm just trying to follow his edit.
Yeah, I'm trying to follow his edit too and I'm not.
Sometimes he has edits that are wrong, I'm just, you know, just that he went through it so quickly, I think.
Right. Okay, I think.
You know what it is?
There's supposed to be a comma after created.
Maybe it's a semicolon. You think it's a semicolon, forget as.
Right, drop the as, I think it's no more than one accessory apartment may be created, comma, there shall be no more than two dwelling units in a structure.
Comma.
Right, or no more than.
Two dwelling units on a single family lot.
Lot, yeah, I mean, it makes sense.
That's good.
That's attached and deemed attached, defined.
Right?
That's why I fought with you guys all for like a whole year over it.
Okay. O seven, no changes, O eight.
John, before we leave O seven there, I personally really don't understand, or at least I don't think it's listed here, is whether, how do you differentiate between. A renter, a lodger and a boarder, I looked it up in Webster's dictionary and some of them can use them interchangeably.
Yeah, I know.
Now, if there's, if there's, if there's some intent to keep out a certain class or a certain type of renter, then we should spell it out, but otherwise, I just don't see where this is helpful.
It's, it's the difference between having a lease with a family or an individual for a, a month or, or more. Or just having people hang out in the, in, in the, uh, um, like on a weekly basis.
It's a casual arrangement.
A casual arrangement or something where.
Or transients, they don't want transients there.
So that's, that's exactly what we are, not trying to encourage.
Is there some way that we could simply specify that so that it's equiv- unequivocally clear?
Well, we should probably have definitions.
Well, let's have, I don't think we have definitions, so let's go back and let, well, I think we need to define them.
Okay.
Borders and hoarders.
But, but long-term renters are permitted?
Yes.
Yes.
So, again, there would be an enforcement issue, but could we define the other way?
It's gonna be.
Put a lit, say that no renters, however we define that for leases, less than X period of time or something.
I don't think it's so much that we're trying to monitor, it's more if neighbors complain type thing.
Yeah.
I think we need to define borders and lodgers. I think that'd be helpful, you're not the first person who's raised that.
You can say casual arrangements for transits.
It works.
Well, Sam might be helpful there, okay, can we go on to eight? Okay. So, this is where. Uh, Eric wants site plan approval by the conservation commission is required before submitting the building permit or special permit. I, I guess I raised a question here, why does, why the CONCON?
I don't understand that.
Board of Health maybe.
And CONCON would only be if this was gonna be, you know, work within, you know, the buffer zone.
I think it was just a typo.
I thi- yeah, but does he want, but does he want approval from the Board of Health?
You don't need approval from.
Well, he needs to have, 'cause it's, it's referencing Title V. So if it's referencing Title V, I think that it might be.
Oh, I think that's, you're right.
Alright, so let's say Board of Health. Let's just leave it there and then we'll, we'll obviously run this all by him and see if that's what he meant. When does the applicant need to be, go to CONCON, so that, okay, Kate doesn't have to go to CONCON and we know when he has to go to the.
I think he means the Board of Health, when does, but he's asking you, when do they need to?
And he's just saying engineered stamp drawings, he has this later on, so we don't need that. O nine. Existing house and accessory apartment shall comply with all applicable health, safety, building and other, in effect, at the time of the granting of the permit, or. The special per, okay, building permit or the special permit. That looks okay.
I think the idea was.
You don't, oh, you mean prior to the issuance?
Why do you need the Board of Health in there?
Again, because of the septic system.
Septic.
But isn't that part of the whole building permit?
Here though.
Isn't that part of the whole building permit?
Yeah.
So why do, why isn't that redundant, you already mentioning the building permit, so why do you need the Board of Health?
Well, I think what happens here is that, I think that he, he feels that he needs to somehow in these things give direction to people so that. He gets so many applications that are incomplete.
But this is gonna change though, because, um, Susan's involved now and she's going to, and she knows both.
It will help considerably.
So, I don't, I don't think you should put that sentence, it's redundant. I mean, we, we can't explain every little detail for everything, it can't, it's, it's a bylaw.
I know.
He addresses that in his comment though, the next comment down.
We had it in there.
The next comment down says, what is the health department checking for that the building inspector is not, so he questions his own sentence up here.
Well, we had that in, so I'm not ready to take it out, I only guess we went through it before and the question is, do we accept his?
I think you should take it out. Why are you gonna put it in there though? Why is it, why, but why can't we take it out? If it's already, we're already making corrections.
Alright. So let's see what it makes sense, the existing house and the accessory apartment shall comply with all applicable health, safety, building and other applicable codes. In effect, at the time of the granting of the building permit, we always say this kind of language. We always say that before we give you a building permit, we say that you have to have your.
Right.
Verbal stuff together.
But are we only talking about taking out that last sentence?
Yeah.
Isn't that what you just suggested?
No, I'm just giving them a hard time.
So let's take out the last sentence.
If it's consistent with the rest of the document, then leave it, but it just seems.
Yeah, I'd say let's take it out. You assume, you, 'cause you're saying the Board of Health shall give, 'cause that's redundant, right?
Yes.
Right, yes.
Let's take that out.
Can we also capitalize B and building, okay, um, that should be consistent?
Sure, sure. Okay, uh, ten. Supposed you shall not violate any deed restrictions applicable to the subject prop- property, this is where he wants to be lot, 'cause there's no definition of property. Is that okay with, is everybody okay, a lot, it's a little. But we do define lot.
That's the terminology we, they use in the ZBA, lot.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, like for the, um, P I O D, they have to look at the lot size and all that stuff, that's the terminology they're used to using.
Whereas property.
Property has a slightly different meaning.
Property, it usually includes the structures that are on it.
Right, right, I mean, I, I, I would suggest keeping property.
So let's then come up with a definition for property.
Why don't you call it real property? As opposed to things.
Let's define it, we don't have a definition for property, so let's not do lot and Martha, let's come up with a property definition.
We'd need a dictionary for all those definitions.
Okay, eleven.
My only suggestion would be though, that once we have all those definitions, that we go back through and see how many places we can use the same terminology. 'Cause in six before, we're talking about units on a single family lot, so we won't.
But that, that's the, that's normally how we state it though, in our bylaw, isn't it?
I'm not saying that, that's not necessarily a perfect example, but there may be instances where.
Okay.
We've created.
I agree, no, no, I think, I think you have to do that.
Are we looking when, like lot is referring to the, actually, the boundaries of the property?
Lot, lot is like a, in a, in a, an assess- assessment, assessment map, right?
It's the land only.
Purveyor.
Right, it's just the land.
Survey of the land.
So, then.
And the property is the land and the structures. I think.
So they're saying there's no more than two structures on the.
It has to be the property.
Wouldn't be on the property, it would be on the lot.
Because the, because the deed restrictions would have. Something to do with the lot, but mostly to do with the structures, so we need property.
Yeah, the language in six of ten may be, may be appropriate to have them be the same.
Alright, anybody comment on, on eleven or twelve?
On eleven, I would say, that, to me, that's a little confusing, it says it's basically an extension. I, I, I don't know exactly what was intended here, but I think it would be important to have, uh, it, that this, this shall not be construed. To mean that there shouldn't be separate billing capabilities.
Well, what it means is, you shouldn't be taking two electric services in off the street.
Right.
This means you have one electric service, one water service, one sewer service, one, one cable, you know.
And that's fine, but when you come, but I think it has to be, there should be something in there where you're not, uh, precluding the possibility of separate billing arrangements. In other words, there may be one water line coming in or, or in one gas line coming in and one electrical line coming in. But there should be separate meters on each one so that they can be separated out.
Well, I don't know if that's the case.
Yeah, I don't, and I don't know if you can, you can't do that if you have a single service coming in.
Is that right? Yeah, okay, alright.
Yeah.
And that doesn't preclude.
And that also keeps us into a non-two-family situation. It keeps us in as an accessory.
Well, but, but if you're gonna allow unrelated people, that's not gonna be a satisfactory arrangement as far as the tenant is.
And what, you're right.
Well, it is, because the tenant then, it's, it would be, the rental arrangement would be, utilities would be included.
Be included in, they're just simply included.
Legally, an owner cannot bill for those unless they're separately needed.
Right, wanna have separate meter.
So it would actually be advanta- it would be advantageous for the renter.
So the.
Yeah, but it wouldn't be advantageous for the guy that owns it. I wouldn't want that.
Understood, but if, if ideas to try to limit that.
My son has an accessory apartment.
To have family arrangements and things where you would care less.
A family arrangement, yes, but as I understand it, we're specifically allowing unrelated people coming in on a long-term lease.
I think we're allowing it, but we're not necessarily advocating for.
You can incorporate your utilities in the lease, we provide utilities.
Yeah, but that's, you know what that means, as far as a landlord is concerned? All of a sudden, they're not gonna care.
Oh, I hear you're saying question.
I just, I don't like, I like looking at the bylaw mocked up, the whole thing.
No, it's easier.
Okay, uh, eleven and, eleven, okay, twelve, okay, this is parking. B, atta- now we're into the subset.
I'm sorry, can we go back to nine just for a second?
Nine?
Just for a second.
Excuse me!
I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with saying building permit or special permit, because you're always gonna have a building permit. You have a special permit in certain cir- circumstances, so it's not either or. The intention was that it would be the building permit.
That's what it was, wasn't it?
Well, no, we just had and.
And.
He put, he substituted or for and.
Well, here's what it is, you know what it was, it was and/or, but we have of instead of or.
Well, no, we had.
And what?
Oh, right.
See?
Oh, no, 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 it was okay.
Correct?
It was the, um, it was granting of the building permit and of the special permit where required.
How about we write, building permit and where applicable, special permit.
Yes.
That's good.
Yeah.
Like it.
Okay, now you can go on.
Okay. Uh, we were at attached accessory apartments. All attached accessory apartments. The general requirements, that's correct, see, that, that's where. Uh, that's, that's the definition that we use, so that's correct, general requirements and forth, that's the title and the specific following conditions, so that's good. What has he taken out, in addition? Oh, I see what he's done, okay. He's moved that to the one below.
Oh, right, to O one, yep.
And, uh, an accessory apartment added to the single family shall be within and have a common wall.
John, should that say two A and two C?
Uh, we're, uh, which?
Rowey.
On B.
Oh, two A and, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Now.
I thought two C was the detached.
Was that detached?
Yeah, I thought that was detached.
To B.
This is to B.
Two A and two B. Right?
And this is to B, the attached accessory apartment is to B, so it'd just be two A.
So, in his suggested language here, in the last paragraph on the bottom of page four and six, I'm gonna make the following recommendation. That these two, this, these two sentences should be separated, because what he's added, which is. An attached accessory apartment shall not change the single family character of the principal dwelling, except for the provision of an additional access or egress. That's a design kind of criteria tuned to with the exterior of the structure and that ought to be first. And then the second one ought to be, an accessory apartment added to the single family residence shall be within or have a common wall. And then followed by, if you turn the page, all of these other things which are similar. Which are all stairways and the second story shall be enclosed, any new entrance shall be located on, on the side of the building, et cetera, et cetera.
Could we talk about the word character, does that mean appearance?
Where do we have that?
What does it mean?
Character, single family.
Single family character.
We, we struggle with this term quite a bit, whether it's in this discussion or. Other zoning areas where we talk about new things not being. Out of character with the existing neighborhood.
That's fine. But, does it mean appearance too, like the rest of the buildings in the neighborhood? It appears two or three places here.
Well, I think in this particular case, it's, it's the, the, the essence of the structure as a single family. Structure as opposed to.
So, so there's a number of words that you tend to fly around with, which is design, which I think we threw out on this. Because that's a little too.
What it really means is you don't wanna make it look like it is a two-apartment building.
Right, right.
Right.
You want it to still look like a single family home.
You want it to remain looking like a single family home.
Let's say it.
Say, single family architectural character?
That's getting a little too deep.
Okay.
But didn't we have, whenever we do these things, don't we have an issue with people like, how, how is that defined, or how do you determine?
Well, we didn't have an issue when we took it to approval, no, at, at town meeting, it seemed to be okay, but. Single family character, what was the other word that someone suggested?
Appearance, nature.
Or nature.
Anybody wanna vote on this? Anybody like one more than the other?
Although I propose nature, I think appearance is probably the clearest of the three.
Okay, let's go there.
I had included one thing as appearance and purpose. That was...
I like that.
Appearance and purpose seems to work better.
Okay. So again, I'd like to switch that, so that would be the first one, and then the second one starts this kind of litany of criteria about how the structure needs to be separated from the other... From the primary structure.
So we have oh one, oh two, oh three.
Right. And then you turn the page and oh two becomes oh three and oh three, oh four, and oh five, okay? Then you get to oh five, the new oh five, prior to issuance of a building permit, and this is his criteria. He wants this. The site plan drawn to scale shall be submitted, showing the lot size, et cetera. I can't fight without. I think he's right. But then he's saying B, building floor plans and elevations have to be submitted as well.
It says on six.
So that's oh five, A and B are clearly...
Prior to the issuance, okay.
If you listen to his concerns as he went through this stuff, that's where he really got, you know, showed his deepest concerns. Now, is there any... You're looking pensively. You don't think that that makes sense?
No, I think we need that. I'm just wondering whether that should be up under general conditions, because that's something we would want for both.
Why don't you and Sam work that out? I think it needs to be in there, and so the question of where it should be.
Or if we have a separate... Something separate that talks about...
Well, you know why he's added it, Martha, down below. He's added six.
Yeah, I s...
As a result, it probably would make sense just to have it in the...
Have it once, right.
See, he's got... Yeah, so he's got it for both.
Right, right.
So since he's...
Maybe there should be a separate something for submission requirements.
What do you call it? Administration?
Right, well, submission requirements.
Submission requirements. So...
Are there differences? I mean, if it's... If something's going to the ZBA, do they need something more? I don't... I mean, we could track what he wrote, but...
Oh, I see what...
We're right here. Listen, you know where we are?
Oh, yeah, I wish. Which one are you?
A is the same.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be the same for both.
No.
Yep, it's the same.
Yep, okay. So, we'll look at taking oh five, A and B, and oh five, oh six, A and B, and doing a general condition statement.
In the last line of B, there's just standing alone, "Appearance." That's... That came up all by itself again instead of "character."
Where are you, George?
The last line of six B.
Six B.
Yeah. Says, "ought to be appearance of the single-family unit," as opposed to "character" or "appearance and purpose."
That's his language, that's not ours.
Yeah, there's some inconsistencies. It kept confusing me where we're dealing with "character" and "appearance."
Well, we changed "character" to...
We've seen... Cleanened some of that up, yes.
We changed it to "appearance."
And it's also in C, oh three, second line. Where it says, "essential character" as opposed to appearance.
C, oh three, second line?
Yeah.
Yeah, "central character."
But it says, "The appearance of the accessory structure shall..."
Martha, Martha, have fun with this.
You and Sam are gonna go through this anyway, right?
Oh, man.
Yeah, four, they have "single-family residential character," so I think it should be all the same word.
Yeah, one way or the other.
One way or the other, right, exactly.
You know what? I think this is my language. I swear to God. I'm looking to say, "You know, this seems familiar."
That's your fault.
It was probably around, you know, nine o'clock on a Tuesday night. All right, let's go back. So, on C, detached accessory apartments, "All detached accessory apartments shall meet general requirements and forth." That's pretty straightforward, and then he's taken out... And that's because he's got this now in the front, right? The ZBA is the special grant, so that's okay. And then the date is not October fifty-nine.
No, it's not. No, it's whatever date it was first, yeah.
Two thousand and eight is the first one and then amended in two thousand and twelve. Well, it says right here, right, doesn't it?
That's when the accessory bylaw was passed?
No.
Two thousand and six.
That's when our zoning bylaw. He was interpreting it as the zoning bylaw as opposed to the accessory apartment.
So the first accessory apartment was done in two thousand and six and then we amended it in two thousand and twelve. So, just, we'll do that. And then... And then at the bottom of the page, in D, for detached accessory apartments, the ZBA, for some reason, he doesn't like a special grant permit.
What you could say is, instead of saying with this family residential...
They allow minor dimensional variations.
You say with the appearance of a single-family... In other words, instead of putting it here, you could put it in front with the appearance...
Is this...
I'd keep it in.
Is this... Wait a minute. One of them had variations in one unit. Is this the detached?
Dwelling unit, here we go.
For detached accessory apartments, the ZBA has the special granting... Do you have this?
Yeah, but because in here, I think it's, we allow some deviation on the detached, but not on the attached.
So he wanted that.
Yeah, yeah. So you're putting it in front.
That's not it, okay.
No.
And should be a single-family dwelling unit, or do you wanna put in?
I think so, too.
All right, so my thing is keep it in.
Because it clarifies their role.
You with us?
No, I'm...
Where are you? See, I knew you were doing that. I knew you were doing that.
Well, under those circum...
I know that.
Under those circumstances, they...
I mean, I did.
John! Hi, folks. Under those circumstances, the ZBA would not have authority to make those changes unless they were the special permit authority.
Yeah.
So, we can leave that in.
I think you leave it in.
You have to leave it in.
Yeah.
Otherwise, they wouldn't have authority.
And I'm not sure why he wanted it out, but anyway, so that's where we are. So we just did that.
We don't have any liaison reports tonight, right?
No, because MVPC doesn't meet until tomorrow. May allow... So there's no other changes here except for this language from the minimum requirement for lot size and/or the maximum requirement for gross interior square feet. I don't... I don't know. Martha, what do you think of that? At the top of the page?
I don't have an issue with that.
I don't either.
I mean, it means that they might get latitude in both, but, you know, that's all right.
Well, here's what I think we need to do, which is we need to give all of our documents to Martha.
Oh, Martha, I'm sorry.
Then I just had a conversation with her. I said, "Well, when are you gonna get the master plan or a few?"
And John had a conversation, John O'Connell, about the subdivision...
Subdivision regulations. We want to get the subdivision regulations out. Do you have comments? George, you wanna?
They're unreadable.
Unreadable.
Thank you.
I would not wanna do that for Martha.
I really appreciate the time we just took on that. It is not easy.
Or exciting or fun.
Or exciting. So, I think...
That's what we thought about the use of it.
I think it's well done, and so I think that in January sometime, we'll get something from you and we'll...
Yeah, I mean, we've got to if we're gonna... I'm gonna try to find out from Tracy if she has an idea of when the Springtown meeting will be and put together the schedule so we can work backwards.
So, in terms of liaison, I guess the only thing is, did the... The SLAC amendment last night? No?
No, last...
Okay.
Last week.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. So we have no liaison reports. The CONCOM. The only thing we have on the CONCOM is the letters to yours truly. So can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, and we wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
And... John. What?
You're what?
And everybody is invited to our town hall holiday party at noon time tomorrow, twelve thirty, if you would like to come.
Thank you, I...